Good morning. I'd like to call Brookings County Commission meeting on August 3rd, 2021 with the Pledge of Allegiance. Item number three is an invitation for a citizen to schedule time on the commission agenda for an item not listed. Is there anybody who would like to schedule? Hearing none. Move on to item number four, approval of agenda. Do I have a motion to approve?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. Any comments or additions? Hearing none. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Bow same sign. Motion carried. Consent agenda items. Approval of minutes, approval of travel requests, approval of personnel action notices, and approval of cellular authorizations, and approval of the human services report. Do I have motion to approve?
So moved.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any additions or corrections? Hearing none, call a roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Borzma?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Routine business, approval of claims.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion in a second. Any additions here, Stacy? Hearing none, call a roll, please.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Borzma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Jensen?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item number B, department head reports. And I would like to introduce our new Veterans Affairs, Courtney Van Zant.
Good morning.
Courtney started this for a week, so I don't know if you want to give them a little bit about your background and
Sure.
Yeah.
So I'm coming to you from Lake County. I also had some experience with the South Dakota American Legion as their service officer. I'm really excited to be here in Brookings. It's a phenomenal opportunity and I thank you for this opportunity. August will be busy with a lot of training, as is typical for service officers. So I really plan to get out in the community starting in September. If you have any interest in what I do, my office is open, the coffee is always on. I will gladly walk you through what I do. If you haven't truly experienced the Veterans Service Office before, I'm a little bit of everything rolled into one. It's, it's a phenomenal position. I really enjoy my work. I get to help people every day and it, it really is a position that I think more counties should follow Brookings' lead in. The way you guys have prioritized this position is really, really great and I appreciate the emphasis you've put on it. More counties are following your lead. Making this, you know, the four-year degree, making this the higher pay, making this more of a professional position because it needs to be. Our veterans deserve it and again, thank you for the opportunity. I look forward to working for you, for our veterans. And hopefully I will see you in my office and you guys can learn what I do.
Welcome.
I have a question.
Ask away.
What a surprise, right? One of the things that Mike did, and I'm hoping we're not going to lose this with our change in our, our system, is that he would give a little report that says this is what, what's going on in Veterans Affairs. I don't feel that there's a need for Courtney to come to our meetings, but if she gave something that Stacy submitted in the packet that just said, these are how many contacts, this is what I'm doing, I, I'd really like to keep on how that's working with Veterans Affairs.
Yeah, that's
That would be really nice. Thank you. And welcome to Brookings.
Thank you.
Any other questions?
Are we good? All right. Thanks Courtney.
Brian?
All right, we finished the asphalt overlay project south of town here last week on the, or the week before. And the striping was placed on the 27th and then at a later date we'll be filling back in that wedge, the shoulder there to, so there isn't such a drop off there on 30 sec, or be, be 26th or 32nd Street South. Other than that, we've been graveling up on Brookings County 27 on the northeast corner of the county. That was completed on the 22nd. On the 26th, we started graveling on Brookings County 3 and 5 on the northwest side of the county. And as I've, a lot of our projects are, dang near all of our projects are completed for the year. I, I guess we haven't talked about it, but our tour of the roads, do we, do we want to do that this year? I guess we haven't talked about it.
We've done that. Last year we did that in October, I would say, kind of as we were wrapping up that summer season.
Yep.
Um, is that something that you are interested in doing again? Doing a tour? I will try to find a date. It's gonna be hard. It might be actually into November this year.
That's fine, but all of our projects, except for one box culvert north of Olga are completed.
It might be easier to find a half day than a whole day, just
Yeah. Yep.
I don't know if, if, uh, when we're going around on the conservation tour, if he'd want to ride along and we happen to be going by something too.
Yeah, I don't know if I want to take out his whole day for that. Yeah.
Yeah.
Um, I'll see what we can find. We'll work on it.
All right, secondly here, you'll see a letter in there that we got from the South Dakota government, uh, local government assistance program. They decided to all-out cancel the 2021 striping program. They did not rebid it. So what, we made the decision to move forward with our stripings, gonna pay off. They are going to transfer those funds into 2022. So for a retrace of our roads that we usually do, well, a lot of that will be done in 2022. But all of our, our roads that have fresh chip seal on will at least have stripes this year. But our roads that are faded out, they'll have to wait until next year. So there's information for you on that, if you'd like to read through that. And then we got verification back from, uh, the railroad crossing over in Elkton. That is going to happen on, in 2022. There's a letter in there from, from that and an agreement. And finally, uh, we got a letter from the DOT completely closing out the south bridge of the two bridges south of town. So we're waiting on the letter back from the north bridge, but the, the south bridge is completely closed out. And there's that information in there also.
So, um, kind of done with the projects and stuff. And I know last year you got caught up on a lot of stuff late in the fall and you guys were working on there. And I know we got caught up from previous, uh, things that never got done on time and stuff, ran out of time or whatever. Is there another list of some ideas there?
Absolutely. Uh, usually we're trying to catch up on projects in the spring to perform the work for that summer. Our intention is to move forward on some of our projects that we know we're gonna be working on next year. And getting ahead with our crack ceiling. Right now we're hauling gravel. Uh, we, we have about just shy of 60,000 tons sitting on the ground. That takes a while to haul. So a lot of that stuff's being taken care of. Uh, the dry weather, we're having to, to add water to the gravel, uh, to properly place it on the road. Um, I do have some trainings that I do have lined up with the, uh, LTAP that we're gonna do also because I got a lot of new employees that maybe haven't done a pro, or done a certain process. We're gonna try to get them trained in, so we got a little more depth on our bench. And a lot of that stuff, like culverts and that, we're gonna look forward now because there, there's a quoting program we gotta go through. We gotta get quotes for culverts, so we don't even know if we can get culverts yet. I've got some culverts that I already had planned to be installed this year, but I can't get the material. So once I do get the material, uh, like I said, we got a box culvert that's probably gonna take three to four weeks. Uh, then we gotta get ready for winter. And we're, we're running out of summer. Hate to say it, it is August.
And budget-wise, you feel like if you continue to do these projects that you'll be, you'll be staying within or?
We still have some bu, uh, funds to come out at the next meeting, because I just, I got the information yesterday. With all of our projects done, um, including the asphalt patching on our repairs and maintenance line item 425, uh, with all of our projects that we have planned, uh, to finish this year, we're gonna be right at about 230,000 left in that budget. And I was gonna mention to you guys at the next meeting that, uh, I had talked with the contractor. Uh, one of the roads that I feel needs attention is the road by Novita. I'm talking with Bose right now. Uh, if they would give us the same price, would we want to complete that this year? Because I do have that money left in my budget. And that was one of the projects I had planned for next year, but if we got the money and they're gonna honor that price, if we'd want to move forward with that.
What does complete the project mean?
What's that?
What does complete the project mean?
Well, the, the projects that I had planned.
No, no, I meant the Novita Road. What, what are you talking?
Well, we'd need to, we, it's rutting, wheel rutting really bad and there's some, some road breakup. And I just worry that if we leave it through the winter, that we might have more damages to repair.
But that doesn't include an overlay, does it? Or is that where you're looking at overlay?
That's what I'd be looking at overlaying and using that money that I'd have left over. I need to do a little more, uh, checking with the contractor to see if they'd honor the price. I, I was gonna mention it to you guys, but I, I didn't get a time to get in the packet because I didn't get some of the information from our other projects. We have not paid for our micro-surfacing. We're gonna be looking at a change order of roughly about 70,000 on that. And if you recall, we had a change order on our, on our 23, uh, grinding project of about 78,000. And you know, a lot of that, that's where that extra comes in at, in that 230,000.
You're saying it was a credit to us, change order?
Correct. Yeah, change order.
So the work on the Novita Road would be on the asphalt part?
Correct.
Okay.
If, if we decide to go that way, I, I don't have anything set in stone, but I, I did want to talk about budget. We, you know, completing all of our projects that we had planned, we're gonna have about 230,000 left over.
So you will be prepared at the next meeting to present that to us?
That's the plan.
Thank you.
And I'm assuming if you tried to do culverts, getting the culvert would be the issue before the end of the year anyway.
Well, yes and no. It, they're, the steel's the kind of the hang up. And if we can get them to, to make us the product, we still want to get them done. We still want to put the asphalt in before winter, so we ain't bouncing over gravel, uh, on a paved road.
So how many culverts do you have left to get in?
Four. Including the one north of Olga.
Right. So adding culverts probably wouldn't make a good idea. If we were, if, instead of doing the overlay and waiting for that, if it doesn't work out, say the contractor says no, Bose says, don't have time, can't give you the price, do that kind of stuff. What's plan B, I guess, is it?
I don't have one right now, because I just, I just came up with these numbers yesterday, because I got the information back as far as the, the micro-surfacing final price. So you'll be looking at a change order and the next meeting for that and the, and a final bill for the micro-surfacing. And then you'll also be looking at a small change order on the asphalt project from the original contract price. In a, gained to us also of about 18,000. So all of our projects have came in a little bit under budget.
Does, does the Novita Road, you gonna address those soft areas or?
That's the plan. We're probably gonna have to dig some of that out. You know, some of those, uh, small areas out, we're probably gonna have to do some dig outs and relay in, uh, fresh base and then pave over the top. Yeah. So I, I just came up with this stuff yesterday, but I did want to mention that, you know, if you guys were gonna ask, I wanted to have that prepared because we were gonna be about 230,000 left in that line item.
When, and I, I know we're going to talk about this later on the Elkton Railroad stuff, but are those funds already, are they in this year's budget or are they in next year's budget?
The, the Elkton project, the railroad, that's for tw, construction in 2022.
So you've got that, our, what, 10% is in your 22 budget?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
I guess one other thing to look at would be, we're gonna have a new construction of the Sinai Bridge starting next year.
Possibly this year yet. I just got a letter yesterday also from the DOT that we're gonna be looking at pre-con meeting, which just hasn't been scheduled yet.
So our detour routes are all ready to go, or is that something?
Correct. Our, our detour routes for local traffic are prepared. Uh, we spent a lot of time on County Road 16. We did some repair work on a bridge. So the local traffic, the actual, uh, detour that's gonna be placed with signs on the interstate, you know, that's for out-of-town traffic, but our local traffic detour stuff is in place, uh, including with Midary Township.
Mr. Pierce?
While we're talking about the Sinai Road, I forget our number on that. Um, in July, I had two different people ask and how steep that is driving on that road with those ditches. Do we have a safety issue there?
Well, if you remember last year, we did address, uh, the shoulders, there was pop off. We added some, some shoulder material in, but the, when the construction of that road took place years and years ago, the, the standards were different. But to address that, I mean, you're talking a lot of material. It's just, just when the road construction took place, there was different standards.
I just wondered when we're doing our bridge project, if there's any of that that we should be looking at at the same time. I don't know.
It'd be, it'd be a, a very big undertaking. So I'll have more for you guys at the next meeting as far as that goes and how we want to move forward.
Thank you. Richard?
Good morning. I believe we got everything in the packet that we'll be discussing later. We have our monthly zoning meeting tonight at 8:00 PM, so Mr. Hill is in Florida on vacation. He'll be back on Thursday, so that's all that I have right now. The other questions we can address later on in the, at that time.
Thank you.
One comment. Richard handed out. I imagine Dan got one too. The draft on the zoning ordinance this morning, to those of us working on that. I'm excited.
Morning. Tenants, like I usually do, gun range, we had 78 through the door. Uh, archery range, we had 43. Uh, 4H has used the facility eight times, either in the classroom or the archery range. Uh, this week, they're all actually out at the Swiftell Center for 4H achievement days. Uh, July 22nd, as all of you know, we had the city-county safety picnic out there. Uh, Midwest maidens have been practicing. They practiced twice in the archery range. We had our advisory board on July 26th. We had a basic rifle class, uh, the first time we ever did that class on the 26th as well. We had an enhanced class on August 1st. Uh, yesterday and today, Game Fish and Parks is actually in our classroom doing a training on trapping for their employees. August is shooting sports month, so we're trying to do something fun every weekend this month. This weekend, we're bringing in a gunsmith, just to answer some basic questions, get people through the door. Talked to 4H, they're gonna bring instructors, uh, in all different disciplines, try to get people more interested in 4H shooting sports. The 14th and 21st, we're gonna do some games and, uh, kind of bring a friend and get half off a day pass. And then the 28th, Joe Ad's gonna come in and tell people about their, their, uh, program. The advisory board did approve the hour change. Um, so starting September 1st, we are gonna change our hours Tuesday through Thursday, uh, 3:00 PM to 8:00 PM, Friday and Saturday, 1:00 PM to 8:00 PM, and then Sunday, we'll still keep it noon to 5:00. Sundays are a pretty good day for the facility. This is just for the range hours. If anybody wants to have an event, we'll do it anytime they want, but this is just for the public range hours. Um, also, starting on September 1st, we're gonna start renting our bows, so we can kind of track those a little bit better when they break and that kind of thing. I forgot to mention this at the last meeting, but Train actually got our electronic filters in, so those are changed. Um, we should be good for another year. And then as you guys seen later on in the agenda, uh, some LED lighting and some spray foam. Uh, I've been working on quotes and with contractors and electricians and all that. That's all I had, unless you guys had any questions for me at all.
Any questions for Dr.? None, thank you.
Thanks.
Marty, you don't have any? Uh, we do have
We did have the one office that was included in the packet. I think Lori had just provided an update on the JDAI grant information.
Um, as relates to that, if you would ask Lori, I believe there's one juvenile's name in, in those documents. We need to be really careful about that.
Okay.
We do have a nine o'clock, but we have five minutes, so I'll move on to regular business. First reading of ordinance number 21-05 and ordinance amending ordinance number 21-01. An ordinance establishing a county housing and redevelopment commission for the administration of HUD, Section 8, existing certificates, vouchers, moderate rehabilitation, and other related housing programs. It is, uh, need to note the date and time. August 3rd at 8:56 AM.
No, the second reading will be Tuesday, September seventh at nine thirty. Do we need to read this though?
Stacy, would you? I don't have it.
I can read it. Ordinance twenty-one dash oh five and ordinance amending ordinance twenty-one oh one and ordinance establishing a county housing and redevelopment commission for the administration of HUD, section eight, existing certificate voucher, moderate rehabilitation and other related housing programs. Be it ordained by the county commission of Brookings, of, of county of Brookings, South Dakota as follows. To wit, article one, Brookings County Housing and Redevelopment Commission, section one, created. There is hereby created and established in and for the county of Brookings, a county housing and redevelopment commission to administer, contract, control and supervise HUD, section eight, existing certificate voucher, moderate rehabilitation and other related housing programs through the use of municipal, county and federal funds and to exercise any and all powers conferred by SDCL chapters eleven dash seven and eleven dash seven A. Section two, composition and appointment. The housing and redevelopment commission shall be composed of five commissioners. The members shall be made up of at least one resident of the city of Brookings, at least one resident that resides outside the city of Brookings and one county commissioner. The member shall be appointed by the chairperson of the board of county commissioners with the approval of the county commission. Section three, terms. The member shall be appointed for five-year terms beginning January first of each year. Each vacancy in an unexpired term should be filled in the same manner in which the original appointments were made. Section four, ex officio members. The Brookings County State's attorney or their appointed designee shall be assigned as an ex officio member of the housing and redevelopment commission. Section five, meetings. The housing and redevelopment commission shall hold meetings as necessary to complete such business as from time to time may come before it. Official meeting shall be in accordance with SDCL one twenty-five one. Special meetings may be called at any time by the chairperson by giving at least twenty-four hours advance notice in accordance with SDCL one twenty-five one point one. Section six, quorum of commission officers rules. The powers of the housing and redevelopment commission shall be vested in the commissioners thereof in office at any time, a majority of whom shall constitute a quorum for all purposes. Each commission shall select a chairperson, a secretary and a treasurer from among its commissioners, who shall hold their offices respectively for one year and until their successors have been appointed. The commission shall adopt such bylaws and other rules for the conduct of its affairs as it deems appropriate. Section seven, expenses of commissioners. No commissioner shall receive compensation for their services, but each commissioner shall be entitled to receive necessary expenses, including travel, traveling expenses incurred in the performance of their duties based upon current state rates. Section eight, commission as body corporate general powers. The housing and redevelopment commission shall be a public body corporate and politic, exercising public and essential governmental functions and shall have all the powers necessary or convenient to carry out the purposes set forth herein, together with the powers granted by SDCL chapter eleven seven and eleven dash seven A inclusive, but the commission shall not have the power to levy or collect taxes or special assessments. The housing and redevelopment commission shall have the power and authority to super, super intend, manage, administer and control federal housing programs within its jurisdiction, including the power to contract with individuals, public or private firms to administer said housing program on behalf of the commission. Section nine, collection of funds. All funds and revenues derived from the operation of the housing redevelopment commission may be collected by the Brookings County Finance Office or such other officer as shall be appointed by such commission. Section ten, reporting. In accordance with SDCL eleven dash seven what, dash one oh six, the commission shall keep an accurate account of it, all of its activities and all of its, and of all its receipts and expenditures and shall annually in the month of January make a report thereof to the gen- auditor general and to the Brookings County Board of County Commissioners. Article two, this ordinance is intended to amend ordinance number twenty-one dash oh one. To the extent such ordinance is inconsistent with this ordinance, it is hereby repealed. All other ordinances in conflict herewith are hereby repealed. This ordinance is based upon resolution ninety-one ten, adopted by the Brookings County Board of County Commissioners on March nineteenth nineteen ninety-one and resolution ninety-one dash eleven, adopted by the Brookings County Board of County Commissioners on April second nineteen ninety-one. The housing needs addressed in those resolutions can, continue today and those res- resolutions remain in effect.
Thank you. Uh, the second reading and public hearing will be Tuesday, September seventh, twenty twenty-one at nine thirty AM. Moving back to scheduled agenda items, nine o'clock. Uh, action to remove agreement number twenty-one dash eighty-seven, Brookings County, thirty-fourth Avenue, four seventy-third Avenue, line relocation, utility relocation agreement. Contribution in aid of construction, Sioux Valley Southwest Electrical Co-op Incorporated from the table. I have a motion to remove.
So moved.
Second.
And motion in second. All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Both same sign, it's removed from the table.
Michelle Nielsen is with Sioux Valley Energy is here today to, um, answer any questions that you have as well.
It was tabled on July twentieth, twenty twenty-one, original motion to approve by Boersma and it was seconded by Kroegman. Uh, I think there was a few questions wanted answered.
I think I had a question.
Welcome, Michelle.
Good morning.
Thank you for coming.
You're welcome.
I had a question. Right. Does this have to be done? I, I know, I don't know if you guys are in the area and that the cost to do it is better to do it now or is this something that could delay to make sure that we know the project is going forward? Um, because we're moving forward, I'm not saying it's not, but we're gonna now be expending spuns, funds that are over and above what we had originally planned for. And if for some reason the project doesn't go, we've just, you know, kind of lost those funds, uh, on a move that we wouldn't need unless the project was there.
Okay, that's a great question. So we actually have two projects going on. So in addition to the project for this agreement, which is to relocate the poles, we have another project with the South Dakota DOT along Twentieth Avenue South, which goes basically west from that intersection over to the interstate. And then we also have some line that parallels the interstate going south. So that line is all in conflict with the work for the interchange as well as for work along Twentieth Avenue South. And so we do have, um, what do I want to say? We ha- we have an agreement executed with the South Dakota DOT that we have to have that work completed prior to April fifteenth of twenty twenty-two. Because we are putting in underground line there, we have to get that, in order to have that done before April fifteenth, we really have to have it done before frost goes in the ground this fall. And so that's kind of what's driving the timeline for this. The, um, that project that we're doing for the DOT and the project along Thirty-Fourth Avenue to relocate the poles, they share one pole that needs to be relocated. And so for the work along Twentieth Avenue South, we need to move that pole to the south. And we can do that, but we also have to move it to the west to avoid the conflict with the intersection work on Thirty-Fourth and Twentieth. And so if we do these projects at the same time, we only have to move that pole once. And the South Dakota DOT has agreed to pay for the, the relocation of that pole since it's needed for their project. If we wait on the overhead project and do it later, then we have to move it twice and then we're gonna have to, uh, ask the county to pay for us to move it the second time. So that's kind of the urgency, if you will, as to why we want to do it now versus waiting. So it's, it's kind of that, you know, impending winter construction and not wanting to move the pole twice if we don't have to. But we, we certainly understand your, uh, concern about not expending money if you don't need to. So you just need to let us know which route you want to go. Um, Stacy has been corresponding back and forth with me. In order for us to, to get the work along Twentieth Avenue done, we really need to start that no later than October first, uh, to give us time to work with our contractor and get all that work done. And so we, we would need to know from the Brookings County, do you want us to proceed with the overhead line relocation along Thirty-Fourth Avenue? Or do you want us to wait? And so that's, that's kind of where we're at, you know, that, that's your decision as to which way you want to do it. But it will cost the county more if we wait, so.
The new location of the poles, will that be, will you have easements or will that be, will they be installed on private property?
Oh, that's a great question. So there are, I believe, nine poles total that need to be moved. And to kind of explain this, um, the, to avoid putting down guys into the, into the highway, uh, Thirty-Fourth Avenue ditch. We're gonna do what we call feathering the line in and out. So the existing line along Thirty-Fourth Avenue was in private right of way previous to two thousand fifteen, when the road work along Thirty-Fourth Avenue was done. And we had an agreement with the county then to leave the line where it was. So it now sits in the road right of way and not in private right of way. But as a part of that agreement, um, the county acquired easements for us to be able to relocate our line if it needed to be relocated in the future. And so in the middle of those nine poles, three of those poles will be relocated into private right of way to avoid the conflict with the intersection work. Three poles to the north of that area and three poles to the now, to the south of those three will angling in and out.
Cause I'm sure you're aware we're purchasing right of way for the new road loca- location. So that's what I'm saying, it'll be.
Well, we do have easements that are filed.
Okay.
That were acquired. So, um, I guess, are you acquiring right of way? I guess you'd have to maybe show us where you're acquiring right of way that might conflict with.
We are not, but within the project, there it will be.
Right, but I think, I'm looking at the map here, the three in the middle are right, right at the intersection, right?
Yes.
Yeah.
Correct.
And I think that's where we acquired and that's where they're gonna go. The ones to the north, I, I don't think we're planning to acquire anything.
Nor, not north of the intersection.
Or south, either, both of them are south and north.
So those three poles in the middle are, are going to be moved nine feet to the west of where they currently reside. And our understanding is that's, that's the edge I, of the current right of way as it sits today.
That helps, that helps my questions.
Okay.
Yeah, thank you.
You're welcome.
Uh, and I'm not familiar with, with how it worked, but, uh, if it's included in the project when already the DOT is saying, well, we'll pay to move the one pole because it's needed for the project. Why isn't this included in the total cost of the project in the first place?
I think it goes back to that agreement that we had with Sioux Valley Energy when we did the Thirty-Fourth Avenue project. We agreed to let them leave the poles where they are. So because we have that agreement with them, um, I have been in contact with Rich Euclid with Banner and, um, James Unruh with the HDR, who are doing the pro- are responsible for the overpass project or the interchange project. And they have both indicated that this is a, would be a county expense because of that agreement.
I guess I don't understand the connection there. If the DOT is already going to be paying to move one pole, why wouldn't they be paying to move the other poles if it's necessary for the completion of the project? Whether our agreement was pre-existing or not, I guess I don't understand it. All we gotta do is give them permission to do it. Go ahead.
I'd have to look at our agreement with the city, but I think our agreement reads that we pay for stuff related to our intersection, they pay for stuff related to the Twentieth Street intersection, Twenty-second Avenue intersection. I think that's all in the wording on how we did that agreement, but I could be wrong.
May I add a comment here?
Mike, I think within the work limits, that one pole that she's talking about.
Yeah.
And then you get out of the work limits and then that's where we kick in to have them pay for the removal, or not the removal, but the relocation.
Good.
Yeah, I was just gonna ask if I could add a comment to this. So before I reached out to the Brookings County, I did ask that specific question of the South Dakota DOT. And they told me that they would not be covering any, any work that would have to be done along Thirty-Fourth Avenue. Would cover because it also conflicts with Twentieth Street South. So they, they told me they would not cover that cost. And once they told me that, that's, that's when I, I've also been in conversation with Rich Euclid and he gave me Stacy's name at that point to start the conversation with Brookings County. So if that helps, I just thought I would, uh, explain I, I did actually reach out to the SO, uh, South Dakota DOT about that specific question.
So the DOT is going to pay for that irregardless at this point? You're gonna start the work and there, if, if the project were not to go forward for whatever reason, DOT is still gonna pay to have this line removed and the pole moved? Cause you're gonna start this fall and I'm not sure what the final decision date is as far as the project, what is that coming up?
I believe.
This fall?
I think it has to be everything agreements by October first, I believe.
Yeah. But you're talking the project would be done yet this fall?
So, yes, so, uh, just to help clarify, the work we need to do along Twentieth Avenue South
Right.
does require the one pole, the southernmost pole of those three that are by the intersection there, that pole is also in conflict with the work on Twentieth Street South. And so the DOT will pay for that pole to re- be relocated to the south as a part of the work we need to do, which we need to have, uh, uh, which we need to do this fall in order to meet the deadline the DOT has given us to have all of the line relocated prior to next April.
So let me, to piggyback on that, so you do the work in, in October and the project does not go, who's gonna be liable for that work that went all the way to, I know the DOT is ordering it, but I'm guessing the DOT won't pay for it?
The DOT has executed an agreement with us to do that work. Now there's, I believe there's a clause in there that says if, you know, if we're, if we've started the work or, uh, not started the work, you know, they'll only pay us for what we've actually done. So if, if they were to notify us, you know, September first, hey, we're rescinding this agreement, we don't want you to do this work, well, then we wouldn't, wouldn't do that.
But you'd get compensated from them for the work that you've already done.
Correct, yes, the, the agreements, I believe the agreement specifically states they'll compensate us for all work that's been done.
Is that in our agreement also? That terminology, that clause, we might, we have to prove this today, but I'd like to see that clause in our agreement.
Uh, right now, you're talking about the agreement that I sent to Stacy, the contribution and aid agreement. There is nothing in that agreement right now that, that talks about, um, only paying for work that's actually been done. Basically, the way this agreement is set up right now is we would need two things from the county in order to proceed from the, proceed with the work. The first thing we would need is the signed agreement. The second thing we need is a payment of five thousand dollars prior to us starting any work on the project. It's basically a deposit on the work. And then, um, normally what would happen, once we get that payment and then we have the signed agreement, we would go ahead and schedule the work at that point. Now, if you were to contact us before we started the work, say, say you gave us a check and you gave us an agreement and that all happened by, say, September fifteenth, just picking a date out of the air. And we go ahead and we start work, scheduling the work and then you, you contact us a week later and you say, oh, we don't want to do this anymore and we haven't done any work, well, then we wouldn't charge you for it, you know? But if we've already started the work, then we would. And then you tell us in the middle, okay, you, you don't want us to do the work anymore. We'd have to look at what we've already done to determine, you know, can we stop it at this point? Or what do we do to return, restore it back to normal? So, um, that might be a little difficult to just stop it in the middle. I think we either need to decide we're gonna do it or not do it. Please don't contact us once we've started work and say, oh, stop all the presses because relocating an overhead line is, it's not that easy to do. There's a lot of strain on the line, you have to be really careful or you're, you're gonna run into problems with poles tipping over or wires sagging low or that sort of thing. Does that help?
A little bit, I just, the, the DOT apparently has that clause where they can do it, but we don't have it in our agreement. Would you agree? That's, I guess that's where I'm, I'm concerned. I do agree that once you start the work, we have to complete it. I don't think we're gonna move a couple of poles and then say, well, let's move them back.
Right.
Uh, I mean, that, that's silly.
Yeah, and, and I Yeah, and I couldn't tell you exactly the way the clause, they would tell us then because if we were to go ahead and, okay, we're gonna put this underground cable in, you know, essentially you can't really stop that in the middle either. There's, we could, I suppose, before you take the old line out. This one is a little different with the overhead because we're gonna basically reuse the existing overhead line, we're just gonna move poles over. So, it's maybe not exactly the same kind of project, but I understand. Because those are great questions and you should ask them, for sure.
Another quick question about the easements. Were those easements done when we built the 34th? Or were these acquired for this project? And if they were, is there a contingency on those easements that if the project does not go through, that that easement is not valid? And now we've built three poles onto somebody's easement and they come back and say, get those poles off because you don't have an easement anymore, we have to move them again?
Great question. Those easements were filed back in, I think, 2014 or 2015 and they are effective. There is no contingency on them, they're available whenever we need to use them. So, yeah, so, yeah, we certainly would, would be concerned too about building something and then not having the right to occupy that space. So, I feel very confident we're good there. We did not need to obtain any new easements in order to move those poles.
Ms. Pierce?
I have a question that's really not related to what we've been discussing. I'm in favor of just going forward with our agreement, but do anything that's underground, why are we doing poles? What's the future for that? And are we gonna be redoing something down the road on this then?
That is a great question. So, we actually have a balanced approach. So, the line along 34th Avenue is what we call a feeder. So, that is a main line coming out of our Sunny View substation, which is on the north side of Brookings. When we build feeder lines or when we replace feeder lines today, we will build them as overhead unless there is a reason why we can't build it overhead. And the reason for that is, well, there's many reasons, I'm just gonna get into a few of them. The feeder lines we built today coming out of substations are, basically, we want them to last for the next 50 years. So, we're gonna size them to be able to handle future load. The overhead line, a new overhead line that we would build on a feeder today runs about 110,000 a mile. If we were to put the equivalent underground conductor in, that would be a quarter million a mile. So, there is definitely a cost component when we're looking at three-phase feeders that come out of substations. So, that line, as I said, along 34th Avenue is one of those lines. So, the line going along 20th Street South is not a feeder line. That's what we would call a radial tap. And radial taps as underground. And that's why that project along 20th Street South is being converted from an existing overhead line to an underground line. The one along 34th Avenue, we want to keep it as overhead because, well, cost is one. Length of overhead lines lasts longer. You know, underground lines, we're gonna be lucky if they last 40 years before we have to replace them again. And so, that's another factor we look at. There are a few others, I won't go into that today, but I certainly could give you the whole laundry list. We, I'm gonna say, eight years ago, we really dug into this, did a lot of analysis and said, okay, what's our future plan look like? Because we have about 6,000 miles of line across our system and a lot of it, especially eight years ago, a lot of it was approaching 70, 80 years old. It was all built back in the 40s and 50s. And so, we're being very intentional about replacing and updating lines. And we're very, what I wanna say, we've really put a lot of thought and effort into where are we gonna build overhead going forward? Where are we gonna build underground going forward? I would say we build about 60 miles of new overhead line every year out of the 125 miles that we replace every year on a system improvement initiative. And the other 60 or 65 is underground. So, it's maybe about half and half these days, so.
So, looking forward for the county, assuming the interchange goes in and if that happens, we would anticipate development along that area, whether it's commercial or residential or whatever we're doing. 10 years from now, will the county commission be having a conversation about converting that to underground because of the development or will this just work dandy for whatever developments down the road?
I would say that our intention at this point would be that that line would stay overhead, for sure. There are cases where we do look at burying line if there are some circumstances that dictate it. For example, in a new underground subdivision, the roads are typically curvy. It's very difficult to build an overhead line because you gotta do down guys and you gotta, you know, to follow the road where 34th Avenue is fairly straight. You know, there's little deviations here and there. But you also have to look at what's practical to build, for sure. So, yeah, that's a good question.
Any other comments? Hear your nun, call the roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Borsma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Item number B, action to approve resolution number 21-33, a bridge improvement grant program resolution, authorizing the submission of applications, I have motion approved.
So, moved.
Second.
Motion second, any comments?
We decided to move forward with one more and it sounded like the DOT was going to let us do this. This is on County Road 44. We were recently awarded a local federal bridge grant for the second structure on this road. So, we just wanna get the preliminary engineering going for this structure also.
Call the roll, please.
Borsma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item C, action to remove agreement number 21-81, a one-chart link partner agreement between Brookings County and Sanford from the table. I have a motion. It was tabled on June 1st, 2021, June 15th, 2021, and July 6th, 2021. Original motion to approve on June 1st by Bartley and second by Borsma.
Yeah, so I talked to Dr. Heeb. Apparently, they've worked things out at Sanford. So, he's withdrawing from his consideration of this agreement and they're just gonna move forward without it. So, it's kind of null and void at this point. So, I was just asked to remove it from the agenda, remove it from the commission's consideration and I, yeah, they're just gonna move forward without it, so that's all I really have.
People indefinitely?
Well, I think you could do that or because we've already had a motion to approve it, I think you just vote and vote. Vote it down if you so choose.
Vote it down and we're done.
Okay, any other discussion? All those in favor, signify by saying aye. All those opposed?
Nay.
Nay.
Motion failed. Item D, action approved change order number 006 for the Brookings County Detention Center project in the amount of $24,484. I have motion approved.
So, moved.
Second.
I have motion a second, comments?
As part of my staff report, I'd kinda listed out what those changes all included. The total, 24,484 included $955 for door and demo revisions to existing spaces, 14,977 for the 24/7 office and lobby, some revisions there, 2172 for added power for appliances and 6380 added data for AP devices in the detention area. That made up that 24,484.
Any questions? Hear your nun, call the roll.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Borsma?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item E, action approve the purchase and installation of a new radio repeater in the city of Voga in the amount of $20,825. I have motion approved.
Move approval?
Second.
I have motion a second. Comments, I know Bob gave some background on this at our last meeting. You just, I was gonna bring it forward today. Richard, do you have anything on this?
No, I have no further comments on.
What's that?
No further comments, this is on.
Okay. Any other questions? Hear your nun, call the roll.
Bartley?
Aye.
Krogman?
Aye.
Borsma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Johnson?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item F, action approve lighting upgrades at the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center in the amount of $5,681. I have motion approved.
Move approval? Second.
I have motion a second, comments?
Uh, this is just new lighting in our gun range and over the shooting lanes. I had some questions for the electrician. First of all, will they explode if this is kinda the way all the ranges are moving? They're putting LED lights in, better quality light, they last longer, more efficient. So, that's where we're sitting now.
Is this in your budget?
Yes, yep.
Good move. Capital budget, right?
Yeah, it's coming out of the building fund, yep.
Call the roll, please.
Krogman?
Aye.
Borsma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item G, action approve of a spray foam installation project at the Brookings County Outdoor Adventure Center in amount of $18,870. I have motion approved.
So, moved.
Second.
I have a motion a second, comments?
Um, I don't know if you guys can see it, but I took some pictures of the roof. Um, I know they're great pictures, I took them, but it's, if you can see that right there, the roof is actually bubbling because we have a positive pressure going on. And Angie can probably help me with this, but the range is not sealed. So, what we're gonna do is when I turn the fans on, you can see that roof lays down flat like it should. So, I called in ARS out of Sioux Falls who actually installed this roof and my first concern was, is this causing damage to our roof? The roof is meant to handle this, but long-term, I mean, obviously, that's under stress, so that shouldn't be happening. Originally, I was talking with three different spray foam contractors and we were just gonna do some spray foam on the back wall of the range going into our viewing room to help with sound abatement and our pressure issue because we're struggling to keep a negative pressure to suck all the lead and everything out of the air. And when Train was there, we were walking on the roof, looking at the units and everything and I noticed that this was bubbling and I was, I'm not a contractor by any means, but that shouldn't be happening. So, talking with them and they said, yeah, I mean, so we walked up to the edge of the gun range when we're on the concourse and you can feel the cold and hot, or you can feel the cold air at that time coming out, but this will also help with heating and utilities, I mean, down the road. So, I called the spray foam guy back in and he gave us a quote to do the entire rim of the gun range.
Hopefully, it'll preserve the roof.
Preserve the roof, save on utilities. We can get better negative pressure and hopefully help with sound abatement in our viewing room.
Ms. Pierce?
Two questions, does that cover the whole roof then and is this in your budget?
Yes, it is in the budget. And it will not cover the whole roof, it'll just be the edge around the rim. And then, we're gonna do the roof above the shooting lanes as well as the back wall of viewing room. I know you've been in there, but we're trying to kill two birds with one stone. Like I said, the sound abatement issues. And when we turn those fans on, it's like a, it's like a jet engine in the viewing room that shouldn't be happening. It should be sucking down on the south end. I've been talking about this with the board and you guys for a while, but we had the 50,000 in capital for building funds and I wanted to do the airlock door for the sound abatement and the pressure, spray foam and then the lighting. Well, this was a little bit more than, obviously, I thought it was gonna be because now we're doing the entire gun range, so the airlock might have to come next year if you guys approve it. But this is where we're getting, we're getting humidity in the facility. Like we talked about the classroom unit. Adding that new unit has helped, it's with the hot gas reheat. Yes, every building should be airlocked, but you still need to bring in outside air. I mean, it's, buildings get older, that's why they, basically, you're heating cold air going into the room. It's not right, but it's a thing because of humidity and buildings get older and they're not always sealed. But this, we got a ribbed roof, it's sitting on concrete walls. Multiple people have told me, yes, you should seal the rim of the facility. But, so that's where we're sitting now.
Any other questions? Hear your nun, call the roll.
Borsma?
Aye.
Pierce?
Aye.
Bartley?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Item H, action to make an appointment to the Housing and Redevelopment Commission to fill an unexpired term. I have motion approved.
So, moved.
Second.
I have a motion a second, any comments?
There is just the one application that we received from Joel Price. This would be the position that Jason Moosberger had filled and has since left.
And then we'll be full, right, correct on that board?
Yes, once with this appointment, the board would be, would be a full board again, yeah.
All those in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion carried. Item I, discussion on marijuana ordinance.
And now the work starts. So, there's some proposals here that I was just gonna have the commission consider. So, under SDCL 3420G, which is IM26, counties can still prohibit the cult facilities, but they have to allow the dispensaries. And so, one of the questions I have for the county commission is, is that something that we want to do? And so, what I asked Stacy about was possibly scheduling a study session with the commission because commissioners are gonna have to answer several questions from a policy standpoint as it relates to this marijuana ordinances. And I can't answer those, that's not my, that's not my job type, that's for the county commissioners to answer. So, that's one of the questions, do we want to prohibit cultivation? Do we wanna prohibit testing? And then, there are other questions that need to be answered as far as the zoning. So, can you pull up, which documents do you have? And we'll just go through them here. Do you have the So, that's the process. Pull up the green highlighted one. Okay. Yeah, so we'll start with this one here. This is the zoning ordinance and so this would be a new zoning ordinance that would outline which district the dispensary would be allowed in. So, in this case, the rural commercial districts is kinda what we were thinking. But again, I mean, this is, this is a question the commission's gonna have to answer. And then, obviously, one of the other questions is how many dispensaries? You have to have a minimum of one. I think the city, if you've read through their ordinance, they're allowing up to two within city limits. The minimum is one and then you can go as high as you want. Separation distances from schools, it has to be at least 1,000 feet. This wouldn't be an issue because none of our commercial districts, assuming it's zone commercial in our zoning ordinance, none of the commercial districts currently within the rural county are within 1,000 feet of the school. But that, that would be one thing that you would consider. So, moving forward, if a, if a school district wants to expand near a commercial zone, that school can't be within 1,000 feet of the dispensary.
Dan, just a comment on that.
Yes.
Is that taking into consideration the schools that are in the colonies?
Yeah, so, and Richard and Bob can help me with this, but Richard, as I understand it, none of the commercial districts currently within the county are next, or within 1,000 feet of the schools, correct? Richard, as I understand it, none of the commercial districts currently within the county are next, or within a thousand feet of the schools, correct?
The colony schools, that's what I'm trying to say.
Colony schools? Yes, that is correct.
County, we have six, five parcels that are zone commercial in the whole county. Um, one is Skyview Junction over on Highway thirty-four and, uh, fourteen, or fourteen yeah, over by north of Elkton. The other two are, uh, Wind Tower, O and M Buildings. Um, Corlins, south of Voga, at that time, there were auto parts distributor for selling auto parts and the soybean plant. Those are the five parcels that are currently zoned commercial in the county.
And we're just saying commercial, because that's probably from a pragmatic standpoint, that probably makes the most sense to zone it commercial, but it doesn't necessarily have to be zoned commercial. But that would just kinda be where we'd start, and then, of course, the, the separated, separation distances from churches, residences, public parks, libraries, daycare facilities, um, and then other cannabis, cannabis dispensaries, um, these are all optional. Uh, the city has three hundred for school, a thousand feet for other dispensaries, and so if you don't want two dispensaries next to each other, um, you want more separation, that would be one consideration you could, you could make. Um. You know, and then, possibly putting language in there for setbacks, um, exemptions for any setbacks, again, this isn't required, this would be optional. And then the hours of operation, um, the city has nine AM to nine PM, Monday through Sunday. Um, the license application fee, um, the state and the first district folks are recommending five thousand dollars. Um, and then there's a renewal fee. So you have to first get the five thousand dollar license, and then there's a fee to renew it, um, on a yearly basis, and so those are eight questions that the commission is going to have to answer, and then we would plug it in, uh, to this ordinance here, this zoning ordinance, and so if we move on to, let's move on to the, the licensing, it's the yellow highlight. Should be at the bottom. So this is, this is similar to like a liquor license. So this is where you have your language, um, requiring, you know, what's involved in the application, what considerations the county makes in granting or denying an application, and so this is very much similar to like our existing liquor license ordinances. So this doesn't have to go through zoning, this is something that the commission can just approve, um, on its own. Um, it's only the zoning ordinance, of course, that would have to go through planning and zoning. Um, so this, this could be put on the books, you know, as soon as, you know, as soon as we're done through with the study session. Once we plug in what you guys want specifically in here, we could put this on the agenda, publish it, get, get this enacted, cause this is just the license. Um. And some of the questions that I had posed, um, initially, we would, once I have the answers to those from a policy standpoint, we would plug in to this, um. You know, I, if you haven't read the city proposed ordinance, I would encourage you to do that, um, we could probably, you know, things you, you like or dislike in that ordinance, we could supplement with ours, um, but this is, this is a good start, and so if we go down to, actually scroll back up, so this red highlighted one, this is the one that would prohibit testing facilities and cultivation. And so if the county commission does not want to allow cultivation of marijuana, say, you know, if it was zoned ag, or you would treat it like any other gr- uh, crop, um, you can do that, you can prohibit that, as well as this would prohibit the testing facilities, and so this red one, um, is, is discussing that. I think, after my conversations with Luke up at first district, you know, I think it's kind of a mixed bag right now, as to what other counties are doing. Some counties are exploring the cultivation side of it. Um. Yeah, I'm not elected to make those decisions, so that's, that's something you guys are gonna have to decide, whether or not you wanna do that. Um, but just know that IM twenty-six does not require counties to allow cultivation, does not require a testing facility, it just requires at least one dispensary, so something you can think about, and then, you have that one I sent you, um, not allowing use in public places? That I asked to throw on?
Page two hundred.
What's that?
Page two hundred.
Page two hundred, okay. Yeah. So, this is one that would prohibit the use of medical marijuana in public places. Um, so if you have a prescription, um, you just can't smoke it, ingest it in a public place, and so this is allowed under IM twenty-six, uh, this was a ordinance that I, um, I've been kinda working with the folks down at the Minnehaw State's Attorney's Office, kinda what they're doing, this was a ordinance that they put in place, um, so we could just match that. Um, and like I said, I mean, this is, this is something a lot of the other counties are doing. Um, you don't have to do it, but there's nothing that prohibits us from implementing, um, the use, prohibiting the use of it in public places, so this would be another ordinance that would not have to go through, you know, obviously, the planning zoning, this could just be straight up, you know, I was thinking, if you wanted to approve the license ordinance, once we get that information plugged in, we could also put this one on there as well. Um, and we can get these on the books, um, sooner than, rather than later, so.
Are we up against a deadline, November first deadline now?
Yeah, so that study session, I mean, it has to happen the first part of this month. And I have to get those answers plugged in.
So the, the, the calendar I handed out this morning, so, not knowing about these other two ordinances, which I think we can get to fall within this timeline as well, but they're just handled a little bit differently. The actual zoning ordinance would be similar to how we did that emergency ordinance, where we had a joint meeting with the Planning and Zoning Commission. So, um, you know, if, if we publish that notice on the nineteenth, we would, what Richard and I had kinda discussed was having, meeting at eight o'clock on September seventh, which is a Tuesday morning, which is a commission meeting day. Meeting at eight as a joint meeting with the, with the zoning, the Planning and Zoning Commission. And going through that public hearing, first reading public hearing with them at that time. And then we would, uh, it has to be five days, but it, we could wait until the next commission meeting to hold the second reading of the zoning ordinance. Um, publish the notice of adoption on the thirtieth, and then it would be effective October twentieth, which meets our November one deadline. The other two ordinances for licensing and prohibiting the use in public spaces, if you so choose to do that, we could make, I think we could get that to fall in this timeline as well.
I, I have a question for the commission. I think the particular time crunch is getting the zoning ordinance done, because of all of our publication requirements. Do all of you feel like we need a special session to get together to do that? Or we have, um, fifteen minutes before our public meeting, could we just talk about this a little bit, and maybe we could make some decisions on some of this, so Dan could draft something for us? What are your thoughts?
I think we've got time to make some decisions, but I'd like to see the bottom of this. What's the penalties on this one here? Was, how do you enforce this one? Prohibits?
Yeah, it's just enforced like any other, um, class-two misdemeanor.
So it's class-two misdemeanor?
Yeah.
So we're looking at the sheriff's department having to enforce this, if somebody's sitting in a parking lot and takes a, a medically prescribed gummy bear?
Yeah, and I'm not sure if the city, I'm not, I'm not aware if the city's
In the county, I'm talking about somewhere else.
Yeah, I know, I'm just thinking if there's something similar that's going to be imposed in public places within the municipalities, but.
Is it a, a class-two misdemeanor, or is it a county ordinance violation?
You know, I think, I, I know that the county ordinance violations are punishable like a class-two, so that's what I mean.
Right.
But, yeah, it is an ordinance, but it's punishable as a class-two.
Because I sit on city planning and zoning, I already sat through all this with the city, and I think that Mike had said that it was a city ordinance violation, that's what I think.
I guess my problem with it, in all honesty, is the fact that we're gonna pass an ordinance that's practically unenforceable. And I don't like writing laws that aren't enforceable. And this one is, you know, it's very subjective, whether a deputy picks somebody up with a medical card, we're talking medical marijuana here, we're not talking recreational.
Yeah.
Are we infringing on somebody's right to take their medicine while they're in a public place, if it's not smoking, or if it's just, uh?
No, so, and I'm not advocating for it, so don't, don't take it that way, but just know that under IM twenty-six, so as it's codified, thirty-four twenty G, governments have the ability to regulate the usage of it in a public place, and so you're not, you're not violating someone's right to have medical marijuana, you're just saying that if you have medical marijuana, you can't use it in a public place. Um, and so, how that plays out in the law enforcement, I think it's probably officer discretion, I mean, I, if it's chronic, if it's, you know, someone that is using a lot maybe, or using it often in a public place, um, then maybe that's appropriate to, to crack down on that, but if it's a, if it's a one-time deal, you know, um, the officer can exercise that discretion, so.
What discretion do you have if they cite him and it comes to your office?
Yeah, I mean, that discretion then is like any other crime, you know, I can either pursue it or not, so.
So my question is, is going off of Commissioner Bartley's, is the marijuana in a vehicle? And, you know, it's, I look at it as alcohol in a vehicle, that if they take, if they smoke too much marijuana driving a vehicle, then goes above and beyond, um, medical use. And so if an office sheriff's pulls somebody over, and they can tell they've been using medical marijuana, and they can show their medical card, how does the sheriff's department handle that? Um, is it the same, similar as alcohol? I know if you have alcohol in your car, even though you're determined not to be impaired, you still can get a violation. And if they find, you know, gummy bears?
Yeah, right, so.
How is that gonna?
No, it's a good question, so, um, you can possess it in your vehicle, three ounces or less, cause that's what you're allowed to possess under the, under the IM twenty-six, has to be three ounces or less. You still can't smoke in your vehicle, though, so it's, it's like the open container, you know, so if you think of unopened alcohol in your vehicle, that's against the law. Same thing if you're using marijuana in your vehicle, that's still illegal, you can't, even if you have a medical prescription. So, if law enforcement pulls over a vehicle, they determine that, you know, the odor of marijuana is within the vehicle, but there's no evidence that the person was ingesting the marijuana, and if that marijuana is less than three ounces, there's no basis then to arrest that person for any violation. If they're in possession of more than three ounces, or if they're determined to be impaired as a result of smoking that marijuana, then it's a DUI, just like it, it is currently, even if they have a medical prescription. I mean, you can't be impaired by marijuana.
Just like prescription drugs.
Correct.
You get that, you take it legally, but if you take it and drive.
Too much, yep, it's DUI, same thing with marijuana, but the three ounces is kinda the threshold, you just can't be using your medical marijuana while you're driving your vehicle, so.
But again, we've got three things to look at.
Yep.
Zoning, which is imminent, the other two ordinances, the one on public use and the one on licensing, we've got more time, and
There's actually a fourth.
And what's the fourth?
Whether or not you're gonna prohibit cultivation and testing.
That's a, that's a separate ordinance?
Yeah.
And is that zoning, or is that, um?
Well, that, that would be, it's kind of a second prong under the zoning one.
Okay.
So it'd be considered in zoning?
Okay.
So.
One of the things under the zoning ordinance, if, if we can talk about it for a minute, is this is a template that came from first district, right? And they talk about special exceptions in there? Brookings County does not have special exceptions, and all of that has to be eliminated. And so the, the first question is, is whether it's a permitted use or a conditional use? And, and I would think we would want this to be a conditional use, anybody that would come in would have to, they, Bob just couldn't sign off, or Richard, and say, okay, you get to do a dispensary, uh, that's a permitted use, but it would be a conditional use that they'd have to come in and apply for. Are we in agreement on that, to give Dan that heads up for drafting?
I think that makes sense.
Yeah.
That's how I'd prefer to see it.
Yep.
And then, we've got nine municipalities, is that right, in our county? I got my number right? So every one of those municipalities can have at least one dispensary, or have to have one dispensary, is, is that what it is? For municipalities, do they?
Right.
They have to have one, so there wo- there will be nine dispensaries, minimum, plus ours, is that right?
Allow one, they do not have to have one.
That's, that's what I just asked Dan.
No, yeah, they have to allow, that's what I mean, you have to at least have, allow for one, you don't have to have two, you can just allow for one. Now, does that mean that each municipality's gonna have one? Probably not, I mean, is it commercially viable? Probably not, I mean, I think some questions remain to be answered, as to whether or not it's even commercially viable to have them in any of our commercial districts. So, but yeah, you have to allow at least one.
And each small town has to have their own ordinances, this county ordinance will not cover the small towns, just for clarification.
Yep.
That's always a answer, or a question we get, presented to us, what's the county gonna do in the small towns? Well, we're not, we won't be in, doing anything with the small towns, they have to handle their own.
And then the other thing is relates to when we talk about number, that I'm not clear on, is joint jurisdiction. So if we say it's commercial, then joint jurisdiction commercial is governed by the city or by the county, I get mixed up.
Right now, it's under, but under the city.
And is that in our new joint jurisdiction too, it'd be under the city?
I would have to go back and check what our update revision is on that.
So.
I think if anything, it's not agricultural, goes to the city first, but ag, it comes to us.
So joint jurisdiction would have dispensaries, or may have dispensaries, that's not governed by what we're doing. So there's a potential for ten dispensaries besides what we're doing? And I'm making a pitch for one dispensary for the county, in case, in case you couldn't tell what I was leading up to, just to give Dan a thought on that.
I don't know that it'll be commercially viable to have any out in the counties, in our commercial districts, we have, obviously, we're not set up for anything in those particular districts, so if you allow one as a conditional use, and a conditional use in ag, or a conditional use anywhere, you're still only gonna get one application if we determine it's not an appropriate location, no matter what the zone is, we just write it that way. We're covered, in my opinion.
I think the re-
But it would be, are we saying that you would have to be zoned commercial? Did I just hear us jump over that question? We would be zoned commercial?
Right.
And, and then, because Lake Park wouldn't be zoned commercial?
No, but to, to request rezoning of commercial property along Highway eighty-one, for example, not in the Lake Park District, but immediately adjacent to the Lake Park District, is a very viable
Mm-hmm. Yep.
Kind of commercial enterprise if someone wants to do so. Um, and so I think we, we just have to recognize that we've got more than one of those Lake Park willy, willy-nilly out, yes, willy-nilly out in the county.
Again, if we make the limit one, we can always review that limit down the road, two or three years, if it proves viable economically for someone to, to make that application, we could always change the ordinance, it might take some time, obviously, to do that, but I don't have a problem with that.
No.
So I, I still think limit to one, and, and word it somehow or another, so it, it, it's a conditional use in all zones. But there's only one license.
So Dan, the one hundred thou- or the one thousand feet from schools, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah.
Are you comfortable with that, Marty? So, is there a reason we wouldn't just follow, that's what the law is anyway, for drugs, right?
Yeah.
It hasn't changed, right? So. And then churches and houses, would we also say a thousand feet for that? I know the city said
Problem in a Lake Park District.
The city set a smaller amount?
Three hundred feet.
But do you wanna have a marijuana dispensary three hundred feet from your home? I would not.
Again, it's medical, not traditional.
Are any of these current zone commercials, I mean, it, they're all, they're not next to homes, are they?
No.
I mean, it's not even an issue.
No, there, there's one that's within, probably, the one, um, O and M Building is probably within eight hundred feet.
Okay.
But otherwise, and also to be zoned commercial, you need a minimum of three acres, and you have also larger setbacks on there from your property line, but if it's not on a paved road, county, state, or federal highway, But if it's not on a paved road, county, state, or federal highway, or acts, short access to that, it does not fall under the commercial requirements to be zoned commercial. So it has to be on a paved county road, state highway, or federal road to be zoned commercial.
Does anybody have a problem with churches and houses being the same as schools, 1,000 feet?
Ian, I, I, this is the first I've seen it.
Exactly.
Okay, and I, and I'm reluctant to turn around and just say yes without looking at the unintended consequences of what might happen and what might be coming. Because I'm looking at, you know, some of the other stuff here, like cultivation and, um, what's the difference between cultivation and manufacturing? Because we, cannabis product manufacturing facility, there's also a cannabis, uh, cultivation facility, and I don't know the difference between the two. Um, and then if they're manufacturing, does that allow them to sell? And is that manufacturing done in a building or is it done out in the, in a field? Um, and if it's in a building, does that need to be zoned commercial then, not ag? I mean, it just, it seems like if we understand going through this here in the next 15 minutes, because we've got some time, to try to get some stuff done, but I, I kind of like the idea of a study session, whether it's in the next week or so, for us to sit down and take a couple hours, you know, get the sheriff's input, get zoning input, and just look at the what-ifs and unintended consequences, because we, we know what we have right now with the commercial, but we don't know what we're going to have in the commercial in the county and how we can control that. And so I guess, good conversation and stuff, but I'm reluctant to say yes or no on a lot of, on some of these questions.
And, and all I'd like to do today is give enough guidance to Dan so he can actually have something that applies to Brookings County for us to look at as a draft. We'll be able to change any of that, but, but until he can fill in some blanks, he can't even really do a Brookings County draft. And, and when we have that meeting where we talk more, it'd be nice to be able to see how it flowed for us. That's, that was my thoughts on it.
It'd be nice, Richard, if you had possible locations, you know, that, what are, what places are zoned that are?
For commercial, would be available.
Would be available.
Like you said, there's, there's, there's rules about getting commercial, like paved road and stuff.
Probably not that many.
Any county highway, any county block top, any state highway, US Highway 14, US Highway 81, any place along those areas that are three acres or larger would be, has the potential to be a?
So those, that's about it?
That's, that's it.
Okay.
So somebody could purchase and establish a new?
Right. They could have to reapply to rezonate to commercial, let us know what their business is going to be on there, and then it would follow through the, the procedure and?
Right, fireworks stands are a conditional use in ag district.
Yep, so they would have to apply to rezonate. If it's approved, then they would have to apply for conditional use for a dispensary to meet all the requirements that we would put in our zoning update. That would be under the commercial section, then reference our, um, other section with the credentials on there that they would have to meet for that.
Again, I think the purpose of today's discussion is throw all that out on the table so we've got room to think about it before we have this meeting. I don't want to walk into this meeting, we have to start all this. We could be a little bit more focused with my thoughts, your thoughts, and directive. I, I don't know where everybody is on this and it doesn't really matter, but I want to know all the issues so that we can effectively have this meeting. And Dan, I guess you're in charge of getting that set up. Well, Stacy, but?
So in order to meet, I mean, truly the last day, we can publish and do this is, is kind of what I've mapped out on that. August 19th, we would have to publish then, um, in order to, you know, kind of make this work, because once you've, it doesn't go into effect for 20 days. So any later than the second reading on, at the second meeting in September, and we just can't make it work. So we need to have this study session in the next two weeks.
And in, in enough time so that, if Dan can have a draft for that, can have a draft for that, then he'll come back with another draft, but it'll take us a little while to look at the second draft before we publish. So we can't leave it till the last minute.
Well, and it's not going to take long to plug in the answers to some of these questions. So we can do that at the study session. I mean, I'll just have a Word doc and we can throw it up on the big screen and just plug and, plug and play.
And you'll fix the conditional use stuff and all of that before then, so it makes sense.
I have a conflict from 11:30 to 1:30, but the rest of the day is open for me.
I, I have a hearing at 10 o'clock that morning.
Eight to 10 is better with me.
Eight to 10.
Eight to 10 next Tuesday, the 10th. I'll have to look and, and see where, where I can book a room here, but yeah.
You'd be there?
Yes, yep. We'll both be there.
Marty, does that work for you? Yeah? Tuesday, eight to, no, 8 o'clock, 8 o'clock to 10 o'clock on next Tuesday, the 10th.
Someone's going to have to research, uh, the different manufacturing methods for marijuana. I nominate Ryan.
Ryan, you've got time to do that.
Are you able to have a draft for us to look at before then?
Yeah, I'll have all of these tailored specific to Brookings. And then, I guess you guys will have to decide at that study session whether, depending on the definition of manufacturing and cultivation, whether that's something you want to allow. But those licensings and the question about prohibiting public use, those are pretty easy to just plug in and go, so.
I think, Dan, listening to the guy that made the presentation to the city the other night, I think there, what you're looking at there was number one, cultivation is growing, and that's normally indoors because you have to have a quality plant. It's not outside cultivation. Manufacturing is a cultivator that sells it to somebody who makes the product. Uh, and that's an indoor business, it could be in a commercial or industrial area. And the third one is the testing facility is required under the law that each of these products be tested for their THC. So there's, there are three separate. Cultivation is growing. Manufacturing is taking the product and making a product out of it. And then we've got the, uh, the testing has to be done somewhere.
If we go down that route, though, the manufacturing, cultivation, testing facility, just know that that's going to open an entire different Pandora's box of regulation and ordinances, something that's probably something that even First District doesn't even know. So I know the city has hired a consultant to, to look into the specifics of that, so just know that if the commission goes down that road, we're going to be, um, in terms of getting, getting it right, getting expertise to weigh in as to what we need to have on the books to regulate all of that. Yeah.
It's difficult.
Well, right. And so is that something that we can change in the future, you know? Can we see how it goes in the first year and then add cultivation and manufacturing later? Um, possibly, but just know that, um, I mean, I think the commission is going to need more information between now and two weeks from now about all of those things. And so I'm, I'm, in my legal opinion, I'm, I'm hesitant to suggest that that's something the commission can take on here in the next two weeks to understand the, the specifics and intricacies of that cultivation, manufacturing, testing stuff, um, to do that, so.
I think what, what you're going to see with some counties is they're not going to allow all three of those right now.
Yeah, no.
Cultivation, testing, and, and, and the manufacturing.
That you are not.
Not going to allow that until they have more time to set it up properly. But even cultivation and indoor building and water and electrical size and everything else that needs to be done.
For those listening online, just, I, I'm not, I'm not, not, um, you know, against those things. It's.
More time.
You know, legally and, and that we have good, good law on the books rather than something that's broken and then we got to fix it later. The minimum is you have to have at least one dispensary in the county, okay? And so my suggestion would be let's focus on that, let's get that right. And then the more complicated stuff, we can, we can work on into the future. But the minimum is one dispensary, so.
Well, I, I think there's time to work on it in the future as we resolve the issue of recreational marijuana. All that dovetails and, and to the same thing, it'll give us more time to put those things together. So I think the initial one, I would look at that we wouldn't allow it initially. Just a thought.
All right. We do have a 10 o'clock, uh, audit review, uh, Jeff Schaefer's Legislative Audit.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
I'm Jeff Schaefer with Legislative Audit and, um, I'm here to give a, the closing review, uh, for your 2019. Um, and right now it's in its final form and has been prepared and, uh, it's, uh, ready to be put, to be published, but, uh, um, I have given each one of you a management letter that has, uh, two items on the second page that we would like to discuss.
Yeah.
These are, okay, these are just a couple of, uh, items that, uh, there's no comments or anything like that, including your report. These are just items that we thought were important enough to bring to the attention of the governing board. Um, the first item, uh, we noted in, uh, 2017, the county implemented a tax to repay certificates of participation, uh, issued to fund the construction and expansion of the county jail detention center. Uh, pursuant to STCL 24, uh, 72418, the proceeds of this levy, when collected, shall be placed in a debt service fund. No part of the funds may be used for any purpose other than for the interest and principal of the bonds for which they, they were levied and collected. Uh, the debt service levy was deposited into a, into a 304 detention center capital project fund. And pursuant to 72418, adjustments, uh, were made to the 2019 financial statements to create a detention center debt service fund. As a result, as of 2000, as of December 31st, 2019, the detention center capital project fund had a negative cash balance of, uh, $243,894 and a resulting, excuse me, and a resulting negative fund balance of $290,000. Uh, we recommend the county budget sufficient funds and cash transfers to eliminate the negative fund balance. Uh, we also recommend the county create a debt service fund to account for the tax levy and subsequent debt service payments in accordance with 72418. And if you have any questions on anything as we go along, uh, or anything to do with the audit, please, uh, feel free to?
I just, I, my question is, I don't remember us ever showing on that sheet that we get that we had a negative balance in there.
It happens because of an audit adjustment.
Yeah.
So it's, 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 our audit, we corrected that and from, from 19, uh, into 20 and going forward, you'll have, uh, we, we created one, and now that they'll have to create here at the county, we credit a debt service fund. And in doing so, we moved the tax proceeds from the capital project fund into a debt service fund. And essentially what you were doing was the, those proceeds from that, uh, levy were funding the initial construction phases of your courthouse building project, and they cannot be used for that. So as you kept accruing, had the expenses for the courthouse, uh, the, your jail expansion project, you were using those dollars. And in, in first year, in an 18, you had sufficient dollars that you transferred from a general fund, the seed money, that you didn't have a negative balance that, where, and it wasn't in violation of any law. But in 19, it was clear that we're using that money. And so we moved it out of there and, and to get kind of this point forward, from 19 forward, it'll be, it's correctly in the, right, in the debt service fund.
So what we were doing was using the money for the project as opposed to pay the law?
Right, yeah. According to that, uh, it was supposed to go just for debt service only, and you were using that as seed money to start the, uh, like I say, there were sufficient dollars in 18, but in 19, there was not. And you deposited, uh, your proceeds from your debt issue in the, uh, end of 20, 7.4 million, and that, but you were negative on that fund balance, you know, would have been negative all year long until, until, uh, December 8th, when you deposited those proceeds from the fund. So you're good to go at the end of 20, so, and that's our measurement date for the next audit, so, uh, there wouldn't be any problem there, so. Okay? Um, and then the second item there, we had, uh, noted large variances, uh, or negative cash balances in the following custodial funds. Uh, those are just the fund numbers and stuff like that. And that most of these variances are, or negative cash balances were caused by journal entries. Kind of review these funds and prepare correcting journal entries. I've talked with, uh, Jen and Lori about those things and it will be, if there's any more questions they might have, we'd be available to help with those.
And I'm just curious, they all start with 700, and I'm not sure if they, they always do.
Agency funds.
Is that a particular fund?
Yes, agency fund or custodial funds, that's the new term for them now. They're, uh, passing like, uh, money going to, um, oh, schools, cities, stuff like that. Sometimes a journal entry may be posted backwards, or 742, for example, is your motor V fund. There was something about doubling up nature in there and it had a negative, the number sounds extremely large, it was, it was about a million dollars, but it's, it, it's just a journal entry that's posted twice or something to it, so it'll just, it'll be corrected. It didn't change the cash or anything like that, it's just, it was a, an error in the, in the journal entry, so. But other than that, we have, uh, we're, actually, we have a couple folks started on your 18, or your 20 audit, we're working on some stuff offsite right now, but we'll, we're probably going to be starting that soon as we finish Minnehaha County, so, but that should go pretty quickly, so. With your new changeover to cash, so the gap, so that will go much quicker. And I'd like to get a conditional use permit to be the first one in the county to buy this.
Denied.
I don't know, I'll find something on the way home, but, uh, just got to have three acres on a, a paved road, I just got all the speed, up the speed, so.
You got to get the ordinance in place first.
So, other than that, if anybody has any questions or anything, uh?
Any other questions?
There is a motion to approve this closing letter, so Larry can sign that.
Item I is action approve the closing letter for the 2019 audit. I have a motion to approve.
To move.
Second.
A motion of second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Hold same sign, motion carried.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So Stacy, I, I do have another question about that. The, where it was in the negative, do we need to put funds in or do we already have that covered?
No, it's all taken care of.
It's all taken care of.
Yeah. Yeah. And that showed up at the end of 19, so since then. And part of that was because we didn't, uh, the delay in, in getting the bond revenue because of the delay in the project. Starting on my staff report, we do have that monthly executive summary from Chad Nelson, pictures of the progress of the, of the jail project there that he has. The Conservation District tour, that was included with my staff report, they do have that agenda set. I think, um, you already all have that on your calendar for Tuesday, August 30, uh, 31st. At 10 a.m., we'll meet out at the Conservation District Building just north, north of town. Take off and be back about, wrap that up about 3 o'clock. This Taste of Brookings, um, I know I've reached out kind of last week, I think that's tonight, and there were three of you that had said that you wanted to attend. The county gets two tickets with their chamber membership, and so we just ended up paying for one person to attend then. So the three, Larry, Angie, Leanne, you're all registered and good to go for tonight, for that event. Um, we did get, already looking out, it'll be here before you know it, Hobo Day Parade, October 23rd, so mark your calendars for that as it gets closer. I'm sure they'll be, um, looking at, uh, getting parade lineups and, and whatnot settled. Another date to set would be, uh, a couple other additions to my report, the department head reviews. I've kind of started that process with department heads already, they have a deadline as to, to get the self-evaluations done. So I'm looking at after October 22nd. So starting the week of October 25th, moving on, is there, um? So, starting the week of October 25th, moving on, is there probably a half a day to get those done? Is there anything that works? We do have commission meeting on November 2nd. If you wanted to just kind of continue that into the afternoon, or if you wanted to go that last week, last week in October. Looks like it's pretty open for things that I have scheduled anyway for you. So, any thoughts?
Either the 26th or the 2nd after the commission meeting, I think would be just fine for me. Okay.
2nd.
November 2nd in the afternoon.
Did you say Stacy that the self evaluation's already gone out to the department head?
Yes.
We talked about adding a question that talked about review of the employee handbook. Did that happen?
If, I will send out a reminder on that. No. Yes. 1:00, planned from 1:00 to 5:00. Some upcoming dates right now, as I think Dustin had mentioned, 4H achievement days is going on out at the Swift House Center. If you want to stop out there and check out all of those events, feel free to do that. Next Monday, the 9th, we do have that township meeting at, we're going to start serving food at 5:30 out at the BCOAC with the program to start 6-ish and hope to, you know, a couple hours there. Hope to be wrapped up by about maybe 8:00 o'clock. There's the CDI golf outing, that's August 12th coming up. A couple of you did RSVP for the 10-county meeting in Spink County, the Sioux Valley Commissioners Meeting on August 18th. Mentioned the tour. There's a legislative luncheon on September 2nd. I think as that gets closer, some more information will come out on that and we'll need to RSVP for that. First District Open House is coming up later in September. Mentioned the Hobo Day Parade. That, make sure Tuesday, November 9th is on your calendars for your planning retreat. That's going to be from 8:00 until 4:00 in the community room here next door. One thing to note, the 2021 Mental Health Summit, I think most of, you received an email from Cindy Heiburger with Minnehaha County on that. Bart, I know, is signed up to attend that. That travel request was in your packet today. I don't know, it's August 18th and 19th. It's at Oacoma at Cedar Shore. Are any of you interested or want to attend that? Like I said, we do have Bart attending from the sheriff's office. No? No, can't do it. August 18th and 19th.
18th is the 10-county meeting also, right?
Yes. Yeah. It overlaps with that 10-county meeting in Redfield.
I do know that in addition to Bart going, a couple of members of the Brookings Behavioral Health and Wellness Team will be there as well for Brookings County, just to kind of participate in the conversation.
Okay. I also handed out this morning information on the county SDACC Fall Convention. It's out at Rapid City. The dates are September, September 13th and 14th are the actual dates, but I do have rooms booked for Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday night. Sunday, they do have that golf tournament out there. Wraps up kind of probably 3, 4 o'clock on Tuesday. So I think I've got rooms even for Tuesday night for those who don't want to drive, turn around and drive that back. But I do need to know the deadline to pay for the reduced rate is August 27th, so I would need to get that check cut for, at the next meeting. So if you do know you plan to attend that. Angie, yes?
I'll attend.
Okay.
And I'm planning.
Okay.
And you said you've got rooms for Sunday and Monday night?
Sunday, Monday, and Tuesday nights. I'll probably be reaching out later this week, Ryan. I'll need to know probably by the end of the week if you plan to go to that or not, just because I have to get a claim process through and meet the finance office deadlines. Couple other things. Brenda Schweitzer with Beta had reached out to both Ryan and I at the end of last week. They're at a point now with a grant application that they are doing, that they need a letter of support for a building project that they are doing. And Ryan can kind of add some more information. And basically, they're reaching out to the county commission, asking if we would draft a letter of support. Just talking about our original support for the project and the collaboration between the school district and Beta and then us as well. So if I'm seeing a lot of heads shaking, I will, I can maybe work, Ryan and I can maybe work, I'll draft something and have him take a look at it. Okay. Once again, we are hearing from some concerned citizens about the intersection of County Road 23 and Highway 14 north of Aurora. Had some folks stop in yesterday. I know they've said they've kind of been working on this for about two years and haven't gotten very much reception on it. So I wanted to make sure that, I told them that I would bring this to you. And I think they get told different things by, you know, it's a state road, the state has to make that decision, I think. Marty and Brian, you can correct me if I'm wrong. But then the state says that they need to hear from the county or the city of Aurora. I know Marty has had conversations with people, whether it's highway patrol or state DOT out there about that intersection as well. You know, unfortunately, it's very much data-driven as to when they're going to decide to do something. There have been, you know, some fender benders, but nothing, no deaths, basically, that have happened at that intersection that would warrant them giving it their, you know, a higher priority, I think, on their list.
Is that the main road that you're talking about going off of 14?
Yes, highway, County Road 23 and.
There have been deaths at that intersection.
There.
Lori Bendah died at that intersection. I remember that. Lori Bendah.
Do you know, was that?
It was a while, it was a long time ago, but there have been people that have died at that intersection.
Yep. And I don't know how far back they look at their data.
So they don't count that?
Yeah. And if you're familiar with that intersection, when you're coming from Aurora, heading north and going to turn left or right, east or west on Highway 14, there's turning lanes for the traffic coming. And if it happens to be a large semi, they block sight lines for the through traffic that are still going, continuing on east and west. So you almost have to wait for those vehicles to make their turn, whether they're coming and turning right or they're turning left, so that you have that clear line of sight for the through traffic coming by there. And I think people aren't, they don't know that or they don't see that. I think those people who do that every day probably are very familiar with what's going on out there. But you know, unfortunately, I'm afraid it's probably something that's, it's an accident waiting to happen. I mean, Marty hears about the near misses all of the time, but.
What is it that they want us to do?
I don't know if they've ever, if the state has even really done much for a study at that intersection. And I don't, I mean, I think it's just anything at this point.
That last study of bypass, we asked them to extend it out to that corner and they stopped.
At the interstate.
At the interstate, or just around, yeah. I think they stopped where the bypass hit 14, but wouldn't, wouldn't go further. And I think, I think they said this wasn't in the project and that kind of stuff. So I think we're going to have to try to get in the DOTs to do a study on it, because I don't think they'll do anything unless they have a study.
And I've requested a study 2013 and 2015, I believe. And I sent my, my, you know, thoughts on that intersection and what's happening there. And I get all the almost, there was I requested if the DOT would put a camera somewhere there to, you know, view that intersection and see what's going on, you know? And we talked about rumple stick and the road and stuff. But then you got to worry about, also, it's nice to have those, but it's not actually, it's, they're stopping at the stop sign. It's what they do after they stop at the stop sign. They're not, they're not looking to make sure the through traffic, if there is through traffic. So I sent a letter, because I just, Stacy informed me yesterday about this recent complaint and stuff. So then I did reach out to DOT in Aberdeen, and I wrote an email to Dan Martel, who's in charge, asking him to put this on as a study and also consider putting a camera up. And I guess if they're not willing to put a camera up, I'd like to put a camera up. And this may help us see what's going on at that intersection. So, you know, I don't want to buy a new camera. I can rent something to put up there from Safe and Secure if you're willing to, for me to do that. But I'm hoping they'll put a camera up, but.
How'd the lights get put up on Highway 14 between, at the soybean plant between Volga and Brookings there? We kind of have lights in a similar situation from kind of going around from Volga, plus there's a soybean, so there's a lot of large truck traffic there, which is similar to this. And I think truck traffic is part of the situation there where you have Valero, a lot of them going to Valero and turning off. And that blocks a lot of that vision. And if it was a small vehicle, you'd probably be able to see another vehicle behind it. And so, I mean, I don't know if that's the thing, say, look, you put one over here between Volga and Brookings, right at the soybean plant there, and you put up lights there, why won't you study that same situation, just, you know, on the other side of Brookings?
And I agree. And that is, you know, hopefully they'll do a study and some of these recommendations can come out of that study.
I think the fastest way you can get the DOT involved is just a roundabout. I mean, I just spent the last two days traveling through Minnesota and Wisconsin and every, not every roundabout's in a community, every, there's a lot of roundabouts at this type of intersection out there in Minnesota, whatever. And it slows the traffic down. People don't have to stop, semis don't have to stop. Obviously, if there's a car in the roundabout, they do. But if roundabouts are the wave of the future as far as Department of Transportation's are concerned, and I think South Dakota's leaning that direction too. I think if you suggested a roundabout, they'd be out of the project in a heartbeat.
I, I don't think a letter of concern would hurt to send. I know in White, the city of White.
And city of Aurora.
They contacted the state on their intersection up there. I mean, five people have died up at that intersection. They did reduce the speed limit there. A letter from the city of Aurora and us might help, maybe get something done. But I know Ryan and Marty both tried when they had that traffic study on 14 corridor. And it's unfortunate, but it's, you pull up the intersection, you got these large trucks pulling doubles. A car will be in behind those guys and you don't see them until you let them trucks clear. And I've seen many, many near misses, but it's just fortunate nobody's been hit there. So, I don't know if we could draft, draft a letter and have the city of Aurora sign it and we sign it, or two separate ones, either one.
Having highway patrol and have sheriffs all on the same letter of concern, signature by somebody from, you know, the highway patrol obviously is the state.
Right.
You know, so might have some pull there that the DOT calls up the highway patrol and said, hey, is this where we at on this thing? Is this something we really need to look at? And that might get the first step. That it was just not local people complaining that highway patrol would be willing to sign and say, yeah, there's an issue here, if they're willing to do it.
I'm sure they will be. I know Josh Rosen, who was the sergeant in this area, he's the one that was trying to get individuals going on this intersection too, but he's not sergeant here anymore. But I'm sure that the present sergeant would be on board with that. We all got concerns.
The town of Aurora continues to grow. And I mean, just more and more traffic is using that.
Aurora is growing. I mean, there are probably almost 1,000 people there. So it continues to grow, so. I'm amazed that we haven't had some serious accidents there.
Speeds that they would, that contact speed would be pretty intense.
Yeah.
You know, and a person pulling out wouldn't even see it. They just pull out, next thing you know, there's just nothing you can do. And that person driving, even within the speed limit, is not going to be able to stop in time.
Because they're going through that intersection at 65.
Yep.
The through traffic. There's roundabouts over in Lincoln County, South Dakota, in that busy areas of Harrisburg and T.
I can work with, maybe Marty and I can work on drafting something and I can reach out. If you want to reach out to your contact at highway patrol, and I can do the same. I can reach out to city of Aurora to see if they would be interested in signing on to this letter that we can send off to DOT and C. Okay. And then the last thing I had, I know we have November 9th sort of earmarked as that planning retreat. There is some talk then about discussing, you know, the ARP funds that we have already. Half of what is coming to us. I know in recent days, there've been some things that have come out on possibilities on what we could spend that money on. Do you want to do something sooner than that? I know it's been a struggle to try to find a day on that November 9th, before November 9th, but is there anything, you know, Commissioner Pierce can maybe add some things, thoughts to that if there's, if we need to move quicker than that.
I talked to some of you, and I don't necessarily have a position on this. I just thought we should have a conversation about it. In that President Biden, last Thursday, when he gave his speech, he asked counties to look at using some of those ARP monies to give a hundred dollar payment to people that would come in and get vaccinated to try to get past some of the vaccination issues. And I don't know if there's any appetite from us to do that, but at least we should have the conversation since the request was made.
Are you asking for that conversation right now, or are you asking for that conversation as a part of that ARP kind of strategic planning conversation?
I think November 9th is going to be late for that.
Okay.
Because we wouldn't get any, I mean, even, let's say we decided to do that November 9th. By the time we got everything in place and got something done, we'd be in 2022. And I just wonder if we're interested in doing something like that, if we want to task somebody with trying to figure out how to do it, or whatever, or if y'all think we don't want to do that, fine, then at least we've had a conversation about it. But I, based on what's going on with the the Delta variation on the virus. President's looking at using some of those dollars to encourage people to get vaccinated.
I had a chance to think about it. And, you know, I'm hesitant to do that. Just not sure. It's a, I understand where he's coming from, but I also think of all the people that did it on their own. Do they come back and say, well, I took the proactive approach. I got, I got the vaccine. Can I get a hundred bucks now? Or why are we paying somebody that decided not to do it? And I think if they decide not to do it based off of different, the hundred dollars isn't going to matter. And so, you know, novel idea, I guess I'm not sure the inflammation, inflammation of that type of idea would be a good, good thing for us or for me and stuff. And we're going to have a tough time spending. And we're going to have a tough time spending this money. And if it goes back to the federal government, you know, it does. That's fine, it's not spent, you know, and that's still our taxpayer dollars that wasn't spent. And so at least we had some control over it to decide how we want to spend it, where if we send it back, we lose control, but it's still our dollars. And so I, I'm hesitant to do this and, you know, probably not would, if this was a vote, I would say no.
I think the other part of it for me is if the long-term outlook on the need for potential booster shots or any of those types of things come up, the potential unintended consequence of rewarding that delayed behavior is that we're going to get an awful lot of folks who refuse to get a booster shot because, well, where's my hundred dollars to do what I would normally otherwise want them to do of their own free will? I don't know that we want to incentivize that kind of behavior in that way. And most of the conversations that I've had since our initial phone call have, have kind of lent, been leaning in that direction as well, that the unintended consequences of people then refusing to take action or responsibility themselves, as opposed to waiting to be rewarded for it, might actually make further vaccination efforts more difficult.
I would concur with both those opinions, I guess. If I have to have a hundred dollars to do something, it really isn't for the right reasons. And the right reasons are out there as far as the vaccine is concerned, as far as getting COVID. And I'm just not wanting to give somebody that won't do it for the right reasons a hundred bucks. Not in favor of it.
And I'd have to agree with Commissioner Crowman and Boersman also on, on what I've, I've actually asked a few people about this, and I would have to vote against it, I guess, if I were asked to vote on it, so.
And I just thought, because the request was made, we should have the conversation, and we have, so.
And hopefully, within the near future, we get some clarification and maybe some possibilities on what we can use this for. I know when we do go to our 10 county meeting, Commissioner from Cottington County has been working on this, and there's possibility of hiring somebody within, with the 10 counties going together and hiring a consultant to research this a little closer. And hopefully, we come up with something to, how we can use the money, so. I think Angie is at their conference, and you did, if you wanted to talk about that a little bit.
Yeah, I reached out to NACO and the Treasury for clarification related to building expansions and improvements, specifically where community behavioral health centers are concerned, but certainly related to county facilities as well. And anything that improves our resiliency towards future pandemic situations, where it comes to air filtration or separation with permanent shields or any of those types of things, would all be eligible expenses, according to the way that the Treasury rules and NACO's interpretation of those rules exist. And so I think there's a handful of expenses that are probably very reasonable for making sure that this building is as safe for the public to use, so that our employees feel safe doing their jobs in this building, should there be any variance in the future that, that create potential shutdowns or any of that kind of stuff. The interruption of business services, county staff is certainly something that matters to all of us greatly and to the public. So I think figuring out how, how we make it safer for folks to do their job and do their business here in the city-county building certainly is one of those things. But then improvements to some outdoor recreational facilities, some indoor recreational facilities, some versions of mental behavioral health. So there's a handful of those things that would be eligible.
Thank you. Anything else? Dan, do you have State Attorney's Office report? Commissioner reports and discussion items, Commissioner Pierce.
Well, I was on vacation and I don't really have a report.
Bartley?
August 22nd, I attended the safety picnic, it was well-attended by people, it was a lot of fun, good meal. On the 29th, last Thursday, we had the jail meeting, and Stacy and I did a quick walkthrough with Jim on the facility, there's a lot of changes going on there. The polished concrete floor, it really exceeded my expectations, it looked pretty nice. So it's coming right along, there's a lot of, it's a busy bees in there, they're doing a lot of work. They did have a tour from someone from Minnesota, some commissioner or something, came over and took a look at it. They don't think we'll be done for five months, but Jim said, you know, we will be. And at this point in time, the only thing that would slow us down is there's some pieces of switching equipment for the electrical. They've got to work around and hopefully that'll work. It may delay us a few weeks to transfer inmates while that's completed, but we're at the mercy of parts that are available, like everything else in the country right now, if they're coming from overseas or somewhere else and we don't have them, we can't obviously move forward. So I think Henry Carlson's doing a good job of trying to mitigate those issues and keep us on schedule. So it's pretty impressive, and at some point in time, if anybody else is interested in the tour over there, Stacy can light it up with Jim or I can, and you can do a walkthrough there, be happy, we're happy to show you where it's at. You have to wear a hard hat, you can't wear heels. That's my report.
Open-toed shoes. You can wear heels, just not open-toed shoes.
I wouldn't recommend it.
Mr. Crowman?
July 22nd, attended the safety picnic for a while there, and then I had to leave to head to the, we did have a quorum, so we were able to do business, which was good, and prove, I think last week we approved our thing, the work or the agreement with RAM and stuff, and so we got that taken care of. Also, Jason, you know, did design that or resign, that was his last meeting, and so we needed a chair, and so yours truly ended up being a chair. First day on a, on a meeting and ended up, I was even there too, and I even, well, I said I could run a meeting, so that's all they needed, is what they said. And that's, and that's private, too, RAM usually takes, you know, control of everything, provides everything, and so we'll do that there. But it's great to have Joel Price there, I'm excited for him to be on that board, and we'll have a full board, and we'll get, we'll get moving forward on Brookings Housing. 26th, we had the BCOAC meeting, again, went well. Dustin pretty much covered almost everything we have there, and that's about what we talked about, really working on some capital improvements for our pistol range, and we're doing a few of those now and some other things too, to try to continue to use that and try to make that as efficient as possible. And then the 28th, I sat in with Stacy and Jen Beller from Finance for, with Jeff Schaefer for our, excuse me, legislative audit, just went over everything. And I think part of the reason for the delay, you had asked a little bit why, was the fact that we're changing from accrual to cash, and they had to actually kind of go back a little further. And so they had to get some stuff adjusted back further all the way through to get us to cash. And that's why it took a little longer, that's why it was a little more expensive. But he said it was a good move and, and stuff, and we'll be, we'll be set moving forward, is what I kind of said. So that was good to hear. And then I had a Beta meeting, also on the 28th, and that is, you know, we, there is, there is money there. COVID funds have helped Beta to get back to, from a paycheck to paycheck type of situation to actually having some reserve. And so that's been good for them during this time. Also, working forward now, trying to get acceleration with Brookings School Memorandum of Understanding, an agreement for the joint garage, because they feel, we met with a consultant, and they feel that the opportunity for a grant is going to be coming down the pike here in the next two to four weeks. And so we want to be prepared for that, and we have been preparing. And that's why the letter of recommendation request for us, is they want to start getting those all ready, so we don't have to come up with something in two weeks, because they don't give you very much time. And so they want to be ready, so we're going to be meeting with the school district here hopefully soon, looking, we asked them for a letter of recommendation, and Dr. Willard said he would be willing to do that and stuff. So, yeah, we're working forward towards that. It's a slow process, but, you know, everything with government is that way, especially with using two different government entities into the same thought. So we'll keep plugging along and hopefully we'll be successful down the road on a grant there and can move forward, so. That's it.
Meeting, we spent a fair amount of time in that meeting talking about, talking with Paula Jensen from Funding Sources for BEDC to be more financially stable longer term, which was a really good conversation and spurred several other conversations for future speakers and workshop conversations that needed to be had there. The 22nd was also out at the safety picnic. 26th, we had an ICAP special board meeting related to kind of updates on personnel stuff. The 27th, the BEDC Board Strategic Planning Retreat Task Force met to finalize plans for the BEDC Strategic Planning Retreat. And then yesterday was out at the Swiftell Center judging non-livestock exhibits for the 4H Achievement Day. So hopefully, everybody gets a chance to get out there. Seems like it's a well-oiled machine at this point out at the Swiftell Center. And so it seems like the, I think the arena was all set up yesterday, it ran really smooth. We get a lot of kids through really quickly in terms of non-livestock judging. So I think today and tomorrow are livestock exhibits, so would encourage everybody to get out there at some point. That's it.
Okay, on the 22nd, I also attended the city-county safety picnic, and on the 26th, the BCOAC Advisory Board Meeting with Commissioner Crowman, he's covered it quite well. And that's it. Item number, South Dakota Codified Law 1-25-2, parentheses 1, parentheses 4, personnel and contract negotiations. I have a motion to enter an executive session.
So moved.
Second.
Motion second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
All the same sign, motion carried.